Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you again for attending a Measure A Town Hall meeting. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Laura Lynn Wyatt. I'm the General Manager for Stallion Springs Community Services District. I've been here with the district for about a year and a half now. And today, we are going to share with you a little bit about what it means to be a special district, some of the struggles that the special districts in the state of California have regarding funding. We're going to open with a short video. This video was filmed, edited, and donated to us. 100%, 100% donation. So, we're very appreciative of the group that put this video together for us, and please enjoy. Thank you. Sorry, technical difficulties. Stand by with us for just a minute, please. Believe it or not, this is the fifth town hall we've done, and it's worked every single time, I promise. We don't know what's happening today. We wore it out, maybe... Special districts are the smallest, most accessible form of government. There are thousands of special districts in the state of California and 164 in Kern County. Only five districts in the state have police departments. Two of those five are right here in Tehachapi, Bear Valley Springs, and Stallion Springs. Most special districts throughout the state provide one or two services to a community, such as water, park and recreation, sewer, healthcare, or fire protection. Stallion Springs is a unique special district in that it operates eight departments. Special districts are funded by charging fees for services provided, such as water, sewer, or trash. They also receive a small portion of property taxes allocated by the county, and funds from special assessments or taxes approved by voters. They do not receive any income from state sales tax or gas tax. In some cases, additional funding can come from grants or donations.
Hello, everybody. It's Gary Crowell, the Chief of Stallion Springs Police Department. I just want to take the time to talk about our ballot measure that is in August of this year. In small communities like ours, the police department plays an essential role in maintaining public safety, building community trust, and responding quickly to emergencies. While larger cities may debate reforms or restructuring, our local force remains a trusted and deeply integrated part of our daily lives.
Being in Stallion Springs, we do have a personal relationship with the officers. They're part of our family. They're not just policemen.
When they come into the store, we just start talking to everyone as just the residents besides their just being the police officers.
I've been in Stallion Springs for 32 years, have raised kids here, and was always thankful they had an eye on my children and the community, and the teenagers, and the people.
Preserving the police department ensures that our town has immediate access to trained professionals for understanding the innate needs of our residents. Our officers know the people that they serve, often knowing the officers and the community by name, which fosters both accountability and compassion.
They're family men that provide a service beyond being policemen.
People call for help with heart attacks, medical problems, domestic disputes, hostage, you wouldn't believe, suicides, someone trying to commit suicide. They're there. They are there, and they manage it. They don't fail.
Anytime we've had a situation around the church, we've always had response time, even within five minutes. And so, we know we can count on them to show up, and even if we had someone in crisis.
This community-based model of policing helps prevent crime through early intervention, builds strong community relations through youth and schools, and enhances coordination with local services. Rather than disbanding or outsourcing services, we should invest in increased training, modernizing our equipment, and community engagement programs that enhance the department's ability to serve us effectively.
And if they don't have the manpower, they don't have the right equipment, it puts them at risk. It may put the residents at risk because they can't do their job properly.
Other police departments have computers in their cars. Our CSD cannot afford, and our funding currently cannot afford, to buy computers for our officers. We need to be able to attract new officers, young officers, who are interested in growing their careers, not taking a position here for a few months and then moving on because it simply does not pay enough.
Currently, I have five friends that have lost their husbands, and response time's important, obviously, when you're living alone and older. The thought of them not having that resource is not good.
If we did not have local Stallion Springs police, and we had to rely on other agencies to come and help us, we're looking at a longer response time.
It might take hours before you get another agency out here to deal with your situation or issue you're having.
We're safe because they're here, and we don't have the level of crime you see in the big cities. But that's because they're here.
The goal is not just to preserve the department, but to continuously improve it so it remains responsive, fair, and deeply connected to the people it protects. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Lee, if you could get the lights for me? Thank you. So, I promise there's going to be plenty of, plenty of time for questions at the end of the presentation. And we do have a special guest speaker today, so I'm trying, I'm going to try to go kind of quick, a little quicker than I have in some of the other town halls, if you've attended those. And we're trying desperately not to, not to bore you to death. So, if we can get the PowerPoint going, Jason? Okay, so the Stallion Springs Police Department is a Department of a special district. Police services, so currently, is that the first slide? No. Yeah? Man, I've done this too many times now. It's all starting to blend together. Okay, so, police services, the special tax, the election will be August 26, 2025. The Elections Department at the county will be mailing ballots out on July 28, and they're due back August 26 by 8:00 p.m. Governments and accountability. There's a Board of Directors elected directly by the district voters, or they're appointed to fix terms by other local elected officials. So, why would that happen? Well, you have to live within the district boundary of Stallion Springs to sit on the Board of Directors. Sometimes people move away, they move out of the area before their elected term is over. In that case, there is an appointment that's made by the remaining board to fill the remainder of that term. Sunshine laws ensure special districts remain transparent and accountable to their communities. We hold open public meetings in accordance with the Brown Act, public records with finance and compensations posted online, annual audits by a third-party government auditor, and required ethics training. So, how is the Stallion Springs Police Department funded? The Stallion Springs Police Department is a department within the special district and does not receive sales tax, gas tax, funding from the city, the county, the state, or federal government. Stallion Springs operates only through property taxes, voter-approved assessments, SLEF, that you'll hear a little bit more about later, it's also referred to as COPS grants, different grants and donations. Currently, each property owner within the district boundary of Stallion Springs pays a special tax for police services of $50 per year per parcel. This generates approximately $122,000 per year. Has to be used for police, and I say approximately because not everybody pays their taxes. So, this is a sample. I pulled this property tax bill. I just did a random address off of Bold Venture. To show you the line item at the bottom there, you see it says "SAL SPD Assessment," $50. Why is it $50.22? I just said it was $50 because the county taxed on a processing fee. Why does everybody always laugh when I say that? So, why is there cause for concern? And at this time, I'm going to open the floor and hand the microphone over to our Police Chief, Crowell.
Thank you, Laura Lynn. That's our wonderful General Manager, everyone. Thank you. Testing, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come and look at our presentation today. I'm going to stay away from that speaker. Okay, so, why are we in this position? As you can see, as of right now, the only true funding that is guaranteed for the police department is the $50 that you pay for as an assessment. It's the $122,000, and then we'll kind of get into the meat and potatoes of the budget in a minute, but just remember that $122,000 is the only guaranteed money to support the police department. Now, again, the question is, how many officers does $122,000 cover? The answer is not even one. Okay, so, we have lost five officers in the last five years, two this year. Actually, technically, they left at the last part of the year, but we officially were off the books this year. And one of the main reasons, the officers had young families, and they are required to be on call while they are employed with us. It takes a toll. This job is very, very challenging under perfect stances, perfect circumstances, and someone who has a young family and is getting paid significantly less than our competitors, you can only see the obstacles. So, that's, there's just one of the many components. One of them went to the Kern County Sheriff's Department and received a $20,000 signing bonus. Again, if he chooses to go to certain parts of Kern County, he could also get an additional stipend of $2,000 to $4,000. Live and work where he's at. Can't compete with that. The other one went to the coast, the central coast, and is doing well there as well. Actually, two of them went to San Luis Obispo County, just totally unrelated to one another, but they're both excelling. So, we are essentially losing great experienced officers. The last officer we left, that left our agency, was Officer of the Year with Bakersfield Police Department. We were fortunate enough to get that caliber of officer, and we're investing them in training and getting the experience from my sergeant there in the back, Sergeant Mike, the gem of Kern County. Please raise your hand. They're getting that exceptional training, but because of some of the things I just mentioned, they're leaving our agency. Other things is, you know, the overall stress of the job. It's just the day-to-day things. Those things I really can't change, but I want to obviously invest in the person and their families. It's, it's more complex. So, with that, if you don't have a funding source, it just makes it extremely difficult. And again, we're only having the $122,000 as a guarantee. We just currently don't have a lot of the tools to do the job. Recently, I was fortunate enough to have a local business and landowner that has nothing to do with Stallion Springs ironically, that donated $25,000 just so we can have body cams. Now, how many in this room believe that a professional police organization should have the tools to do their job? If I can see your hands. Okay. Of those, how many believe that we should have the ability to have body-worn cameras? Show of hands. Okay. So, again, these are about every five-year contracts. You're looking at everything going up about 15% per year. So, again, not going to do the math for you. You have the figures, just do it your time when you have your own time. $25,000, as small as we are, is a lot of money for us when we don't have a line item. Now, I believe Tehachapi Police Department had a quote, and it was, I think it was, I don't want to necessarily say because I don't want to give you misinformation, but it was significantly more than that, up to almost like a monthly contract type of thing. But neither here nor there. So, again, we just want to have tools to do our job. Joanie Clark was in our promotional video, or educational video, I should say, and, Joanie, raise your hand. Thank you, Ms. Joanie. She mentioned something along the lines of, "We do not have computers in our car." Does anyone think that's an unreasonable request? Raise your hand. And again, if you do believe it's unreasonable, just educate you as far as, and that's fine. We are doing things effectively, kind of the old way of you receive a call. We are, we have a radio in the car, thank goodness, but we are communicating with dispatch. But the industry standard at this point is generally, you have some type of access in your office, but at a bare minimum generally in your patrol car. We don't have any of that. So, again, as a recruitment and a retaining service, when we don't have those tools, it makes it very challenging for us. Again, we are hurting and we're no longer competitive because we are losing because of money. When agencies are offering college degrees, like Irvine Police Department, or again, like I mentioned, the Sheriff's Department at $25,000, those are difficult. And by no means am I saying that we are ever going to be able to do that, but at least if we can show who we are, you, the community, maybe we can get those diamonds in the rough like we've had. Because we have had some exceptional officers, we've had, we had some that were not the best either, but we are going out and trying to get the best product, and it makes it difficult because I am representing you as a community and trying to get those diamonds in the rough. The people that you expect that are not going to bring shame to your community, but it also comes at a cost. Those, those officers that we're hiring are experienced officers. It's not just someone who's coming out of the academy. You really have to look at them like they're detectives, someone who has like five years or more of experience. Also, that comes at a cost, because like what I'm mentioning, those people were stealing their knowledge and their training that they're getting from somewhere else. We're trying to do the same. And again, that's just the way law enforcement is, is we're always trying to find better people for our agencies, but it's a dog-dog-eat-world. Where at's critical staffing levels? I generally didn't like to share my, my numbers because my, I don't want this information to get out, but I made that because I think it's important. Any idea how many officers may be operational right now? And there's a reason for that. We're at critical staffing levels. And I can, I'm going to go on a limb, and hopefully it doesn't bite me in the rear somewhere, but right now, in this room, you have 100% of the police department. And anywhere else are you going to see that? Myself and Sergeant Bones are only officers that are responding. Last week, I worked 11 days straight, 24 hours a day, working eight to 18 hours a day, still being on call, not being compensated. And by no means am I trying to sway you to vote one way or another. I'm just merely saying what the model is. Is again, I'm a salary employee, okay? I've chose to do that, but this is an unsustainable model, right? We can't continue going down this path. Sergeant Bones can't continue going down this path. We do have a part-time officer who makes more at her other law enforcement job than here. So, again, how do we try to reach those, those officers, men and women, to come here? We need help. It's as simple as that. So, the, the value of local policing is, you know, our general knowledge of the area, our personal relationships that we're able to do with you. Oftentimes, I know a lot of you by a first-name basis. With an outside agency, you're not going to get that, because oftentimes, there's going to be a reciprocal staff that you aren't able to formulate those things. So, we also have a pretty decent footprint with our volunteers, which again, our volunteers have mentioned that not been seen as much. And again, that has been kind of the main thing, is, "Well, I don't see Stallion Springs PD anymore." Now, during last week, I went to a call where a 16-year-old was suicidal, said she was sexually raped and abused by a coach, okay? That's going to obviously hurt my response time. I also went to a call where an individual was suicidal, was trying to harm his mother, and said that he has hit me in his sights and is going to blow my head off and blow up the house. I also had another individual. He was very violent. He came after a loved one with a hammer, struck him with the hammer, and was violent due to mental health issues as well as some other issues that this young man has. These are day-to-day things that all officers have, but we are not susceptible to having high crimes. Now, when you're doing this, how many people honestly think it's safe for any, any person, if it's a construction worker, but certainly an emergency responder, to work 10 days by themselves? So, again, I have no fight in this because this is not about me. This is about you and the community trying to figure out what your needs are. But this is an unsustainable model if we don't have a funding source. And this is sadly, because we're a community service district, we have no other options besides grants, which we're aggressively trying to go after, and unfortunately, additional funding like this. Now, again, in normal cities, municipalities, you get sales tax money. The Biden Administration a couple years ago had an infrastructure bill. Oftentimes, our residents do not know that we do not get a single cent from any of those things from our federal partners unless we're getting a grant. So, again, we've heard about our road assessment study. There's no additional money coming into the district. When we all chose to move here, there's obviously some obstacles that you may or may not have known. But to continue helping all of our services, this is one of the ways that we can help get funded. So, let's go into the salary, or the budgets. Fred, would you like to talk about this a little bit more? You want me to do it? Sure. So, we, in January, we created a 14-citizen panel of, of a police committee to look at this tax measure before it came to that point. We had a cross-reference of professionals. We had, I believe, over 100 years of experience with law enforcement professionals. Our former police chief, Brad Burris, as well, and Tim Downs, a lieutenant, and, he retired as a sergeant, right? Sergeant, and again, a man of service, Fred Willer, who continues to serve our community. They looked at this amongst our other cross-professionals, and they came up with the number we're talking today. But he's going to talk to you about the budgets of the local police departments current as of last year's budget.
Well, thank you. Hey, don't forget about Neil Record. He's the one who put us over the 100 years of service, so, we don't want to, we don't want, he's on the board, you know, so, yeah, yeah. He didn't do 100 years by himself, but, you know, anyways. He hates being called out, too, I love it. Anyways. Yeah, yeah, so, no, it's, it was really, it was a privilege to be asked beyond this committee, the rest of the team that was on. Our, our job on the committee was, we split off into many different committees, and we did the strategic planning part of it. So, we kind of grouped up, met up. There was a couple businessmen also on our committee that gave real good insight as far as business models and things, and how the money ends up working. But, I mean, you can see right now by the numbers what we're competing against, and really Bear Valley is our competition as far as comparable district, right? They're the only other district in our area that has a police department. So, with that, you can see how far below we are. So, we came up, we looked at some numbers, came up that we're probably about, we're in the 30% range of behind with, with payment and salaries and things like that. So, if any of you thought during your working careers, if you're still working, and someone came up to you and said, "Hey, I want you to do the same exact job, exactly the same, no difference, same equipment," or not same equipment, better equipment, "but we're going to pay you 30% more to do the same job with better equipment," that's a hard note to come up with, right? That'd be like, "Well, yeah, absolutely, if I do the same job with a 30% increase right off the top." That's what we're dealing with when we talk about recruitment, right? So, there's three topics, recruitment, retention, where we came up with the $2.75 a year, right? The $2.75 on the tax, or for the tax a year would be around $23 a year, or a month, I'm sorry. And you're currently paying $4 a month basically right now for the $50, right? So, total, the $50 doesn't go away, the total amount would come up to just under $30 a month, right, for the $50 and the $2.75 coming up with that. So, Stallion Springs, we're obviously way behind on the curve there, but with that $2.75, it brings us in another $673,000, which moves our budget up to about 1.4, 1.5 million, right? Now, we're competitive, right? We can pay salaries, we can be a little more enticing. There's a, there's a, you know, the, the quality officers we get, like Chief said, is those guys that have experience, right? We're, if we get young guys in here, which we've all, we've experienced that already, they come in, they're not being challenged, they're not getting that adrenaline dumps that they wanted to get in their law enforcement career, so they're, they're kind of looking to go other places, right, with more opportunities. They want to go do specialized assignments, they go to larger agencies. We're really looking for that guy that's kind of like, he brings all this experience and knowledge and training like Sergeant Bones this did, you know, and other officers in the past, Gary, and all that, that bring in this, this knowledge that's just, you can't put a price tag on it, right? But then we can pay competitively and keep them here so they can serve the community better, and then we need to get more of them so we can have better coverage throughout the days and nights that we need to have that, right? So, we talked about, just on the equipment side, part of the money would be used for equipment, like vehicles, right? There are about 60 grand-ish to build out a police car, right? So, we're talking, that's something that's going to have to come. They're, they're up for vehicles in a couple years coming up. Computers in the cars is a big deal. He talked about it a little bit. What that means is, they get a call for service, and instead of being able to use the computer in their car if they're traveling around or just pull over the side of the street to run a subject or something, they do a traffic stop, and they need to figure out who's in the car, and there's a lot of traffic going on, on the radio, where they can't talk to people, or talk to dispatch. They're in a stalemate. They have to make decisions that probably are unsafe because you're going to still have to deal with this person without knowing who he might be, what he might be wanted for, if the car's stolen, those kind of things that come back, and you're waiting and waiting and waiting. That's the beauty of the car, because it's connected to the same system dispatchers of information, whether somebody's wanted or not. So, that's where our focus was on the equipment side, is getting better equipment for our people here, right, our officers. On the recruitment side, Chief mentioned it, $25,000 to sign up at the Kern County Sheriff's Office, right? That's hard to overcome, but if we're paying comparable salaries where someone can come in and work here for 30% more than what we're doing now, and be in a position to add really that, that community policing model where we're just out and about in the community, being able to talk to the community, have the time to solve the problem, a lot of the bigger cities that we've worked in, you don't have time to solve it, you put a band-aid on the problem, you move on. And that's the beauty of the small town. And that's the beauty of the small-town community. That's why I moved here. I mean, I'm in fear from Long, I worked for Long Beach Police Department, which is a whole nother animal. But I saw areas of the town that happened without police, right? When staffing levels were low and we couldn't go to the calls all the time, and other agencies would come in and help us. Um, the, the, the communities just went in the toilet, basically. I mean, if you don't have the right police force around, and, you know, that you don't have the right number of officers, that's gonna get out. You know, I worked in Tatchby for years as a deputy, um, and I know what happens when the people start to migrate out, when they know their cops aren't around. They know that these two guys are working, and if they know they're working, they don't come out here. But when they know they're off, they come out. There's eyes and ears everywhere, right? People that live here in this community, and people that live outside, and they communicate, um, all that, all the time. So, that's kinda how we came out about with the 275. A lot of people have asked about, why 275? Well, that's what we're talking about. It's the minimum, right? It's not a, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what the future looks like. This might be very sustainable for years and years and years, depending on the housing market and salaries. I think we just got caught up with a lot of the salaries in California, law enforcement just shot up. And we weren't able to compete and get on the backside of that fast enough, cause we didn't have the funds to do it. So with that, and our SLEF money, the 122 that comes in, that Chief comes in and talks about, that's what puts us about at the, uh, the 1, the 14, or the 15, or 1.5 million area and all like that, so, um... So that's, you know, what we're looking at, is really supporting our guys. And it's good to get paid a good salary, right? To live in this community. Everything's gone up crazy from the last time they've got big raises and anything like that. But I think the property values will, will stay intact. You know, those people that, why I moved here is because we had our own police department. I mean, that was a big deal when we moved from Orange County up here. You know, we had a police department where I lived, but you never saw them unless you had to call them. That's the only time they had contact. We see these guys driving, he drove down my street three times in the last two weeks. I saw him. He didn't see me, though. Uh, I was, I was being, I was being stealthy. Uh, but, you know, but I'm just like, that's so cool that they're just driving around, you know? Cause you never know where you, I've never arrested somebody sitting in the office, right? You have to be out and about. And if they're doing investigations in the office, cause they have to, that means nobody's out on the streets patrolling right now. The one guy that's on his shift, if he's handling that attempted rape call or whatever, it's gonna take three, four, five hours. That means nobody's patrolling. There's nobody else to bring up, there's nobody else to call out, right? It's just that one guy, and he's doing it all. So... Right, yeah, right now, right? All this chaos is going on out there, we don't even know. Uh, but, so, that's just part of the thing. And we have, we've had some technology that Chief brought on board the last couple of years that just helps with, uh, it's a, it's a force multiplier, right? With the, uh, license plate reader cameras. Uh, so those, those were a huge force multiplier with, with solving crimes, the Flock system, right? So, um, so, anyways, if you have any more, I guess there's gonna be a question and answer session, uh, and we'll, we'll get to that at the end of the day, in the meeting, so, there you go, yeah.
You good? Yeah. Thank you, Fred. So again, a special note, when this passes, this tax measure, it brings us to 1.5 million dollars. Does everyone remember what Bear Valley's budget is? 2.5, so we're stealing a million dollars less than our direct community service district police department competitors, for lack of a better term, right? And they're going through the same process as we are, we are just first to the table. So again, they have to articulate the facts of why they're asking for more money, but we are certainly trying to do the best we can to try to prove that. Okay, so, uh, another key factor is that people get kinda hung up on, we get about a million dollars a year for property taxes, which breaks down to what, 1%, 2%? 1%, uh, and everyone gets their cut. Federal, or I'm sorry, the state, and, and federal as well? Everyone gets their cut. We get 1% back of all the sales tax money. Property tax money, property tax money, property tax money. Sorry, okay. So, with that 500,000, that is half of the budget of the community service district annually. Not to scare you, but that 500,000, 500,000 dollars is not guaranteed for the police department. That is budgeted for the police department. If the district has bigger needs, and again, I don't want, trying to cause any more conspiracies or anything, I'm just being transparent. This is what the general manager and the police chief negotiate. But if there's bigger needs at the district level, it could be 400,000, it could be 350,000. So we put a tremendous strain on the district to provide services, which were mandated by ALAFCO and by state law. We have to provide some type of law enforcement service. So again, every, I, I've heard multiple times, well, you're not using that money. We, you, we are using the 122,000 that is guaranteed, that we talked about earlier. But the 500,000 that we are not using, and we, we are trying to do that because, uh, obviously there's increased cost with overtime with my sergeant, cause he's the only one that's working besides myself, that money is being used. But just remember, that is not guaranteed. With this tax measure, that money is guaranteed 100% locally for the police department. Remember, 100% local police department, guaranteed. 500,000 dollars is not guaranteed. Okay, so as of right now, the 122,000, that is the guaranteed money that is going into the community service district. And then the cops grant, the SLEF State Law Enforcement Fund, that is the allotment that we get year to year. And it's been as low as about 100,000 dollars, and last year it went up to about 186. It varies for a lot of different factors. And then we get miscellaneous grants and, and funds like, uh, post our, our certification from the California that gives us the authority as a police department, we get money back for certain trainings that we do. But again, that varies as well, because like I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we are aggressively going after grants. If it's technology grants, personnel, whatever it may be, but it's extremely competitive. So as you can see, there's not a ton of money that's coming in to the police department, right? That's our annual 810,000, my annual budget. If you go to the next slide. So this is just basically a, another breakdown of the expenditures that we've had to cover the cost. Uh, and again, when people hear it's about, you know, salaries, I know oftentimes people check out. We also have to remember that the police department i- is paying fees just like you are. How many in this, in this room have streaming services or have cable? Raise your hand, okay? We have service fees as well. We have to pay for an annual policy and procedure manual, our records management system. Again, we talked about our cameras. Nixle, our public notification service that we use for emergency services, that's free for you, costs the district money. Again, all those start whittling down our budget. The automated license plate readers. Know it's controversial, you may, may not like them, but again, we're trying to help with the safety and security of our community. Also additional fees, and I can go on and on and on and on. Just like you personally, we have our own service fees that we have to pay that go up almost every year, with the exception of contracts. When we have contracts with that product, it, it's negotiated at that point. But again, like most contracts, they're only good around five years. So here, five years roll around, we have to negotiate it, and if we don't have the money, we can't get the gear, we have to get inferior product. Next slide, please. All right, so, this is a, a, a graph that's kinda bifurcated into two different areas. Obviously, one area is recruitment and retention. Ultimately, you, the masses really don't care how the meat is, is grinded up or how your water comes out. You just care that it shows up. You call 911, you need the police there, all you care is someone shows up, right? So this is basically just kinda what we're looking at. We need to figure out how we're going to get someone to come here. So, again, are we competitive? Are we professional? Do people wanna work for me? Do people wanna work for this community? Uh, do we have a professional organization? Are we offering training? So we've heard about, uh, some speeding issues. And believe it or not, some of those speeding issues happen outside of our district. We are certainly not immune to having those speeding issues within our district or down your street. I've seen it down my street as well. However, we have road rage instances that happen outside in the Cummings Valley area, and then the crime comes out here, okay? For someone to be trained, you need the equipment. You need a radar device, okay? It's a one-time fee of anywhere from 1,000 to 4,000 dollars, depending on what you're getting. And that's, it's even more expensive for LiDAR. You have to have that officer trained, that's a 40-hour course. I came from the California High Patrol, that's where I started my career, okay? They helped train me on that. But again, that's more cost that they're not here serving you. It's a one-time deal, uh, there's like a refresher, but it's a 40-hour course. So, and every three years, the equipment has to be taken out of service and res serviced and calibrated to make sure it's within. And then daily, you're supposed to check it. So there's a long, robust situation of how you do radar enforcement, right? But you have to have people that are trained on that. Believe it or not, sheriff's deputies and even police officers, more times than not, aren't certified in that, just because it's a different type of law enforcement, unless they're specifically in a traffic unit. So again, those, those things cost money. You want someone that's knowledgeable in homicides, sexual assaults, things that are happening in our community, we gotta send the way for a week or two or even more. If you're a supervisor, if you're a manager, sometimes those are two-week classes every other month for three months, comes at a cost. Um, again, location, we're kinda at the end of the cul-de-sac. It's a beautiful community, that's why I've stayed here. You wonderful people have done great things for me and my family. I love this community. That's why I stay, but again, I'm trying to get people to see the same thing I am, beyond me. And then retention, how do we keep people, where we've talked about those issues, to, to stay here? You know, we don't have a lot of upper management as far as, you know, supervisors. It's the chief and a sergeant, there's nothing in between. Occasionally, we've had a, a senior officer, which is kind of a middle person. You know, with these fees, I would like to try to enhance those things, because not only is that better for the community and supervision, lower the liability, but it gives that officer more value to their own self-worth. Uh, and again, organizational stability. By me having this conversation with you today, doesn't really sound the best, right? Based on the things we've talked about. So again, we are in talks with an individual right now who wants to come to our community. He wants to, he has great experience, but I have to pay him a competitive salary. Uh, and personal safety, again, some of the equipments, if we don't have the money, we have to kinda get away from certain things. A lot of people don't know that every five years, we gotta do, buy a new ballistic vest. That could be 1,000 dollars or more. Again, does, it, when you look at the numbers, it seems like, okay, well, you have 810,000 and there's only two of you, it seems to be a, a, a no-brainer, you guys could take care of it. But again, it makes it very difficult when we have other needs that we're trying to provide you. Continue.
Thank you, Chief. So what is a tax measure? It's a voter-approved ballot measure, it goes through what's called a Prop 218 process. And that means it must pass with a 2/3 majority vote. An additional per parcel, per year special tax for police is being proposed at 275 dollars per year, per parcel. It is on the tax roll, as many of you know, a lot of, a lot of us have impounds, but some don't. You are billed every six months on your taxes. So each, each, uh, tax bill would show the 137.50. So, we heard a lot of feedback from the community, and I want to strongly emphasize this. The committee, when the committee was doing all their homework and all of their rate studies and everything, and we went before the Board of Directors, it, it was adamant, no CPI. That means there is no cost of living inflator built in to this, it will never change. It will sit at 275 forever unless the community gets together and votes it out down the road somewhere. Once it's voted in, it's voted in. So no CPI. It is estimated to generate an additional 650,000 dollars per year for police services. Again, estimated. Sometimes properties go into default, taxes don't get paid. We don't know how many properties that's happened to year out, you know, it, it changes all the time. So that number will change a little bit each time, okay? Each time the taxes are collected. All the money from this parcel tax stays in Stallion Springs CSD for police services. Locally funded, locally controlled, no money is given to the state or the federal government. By law, because this is a special tax for police services, it can only be used for police services. And we have a third-party govern, government auditor that comes in annually and audits our books to make sure that money that has a special tax attached to it is only being used for that purpose. No money will be received until the 26, 27 budget, even if it passes on August 26th. We won't see a dime until those tax, property tax bills go out, the county collects the money, it'll come back, and we'll start to see some money trickle in for the 26th year. What will the funds be used for? Again, by law, they have to be used for police services. Preserve local police services, competitive hiring package for recruitment, retention, purchase essential tools, equipment, and technology, ensure reliable round-the-clock protection. And Chief, I'm gonna give it back to you, I want you to touch on the creation of the community.
Thank you, Laurlyn. So, when this parcel tax passes, I immediately want to create the Measure A Oversight Committee to see what your depart, what your community needs are. Ultimately, it's the, the police department that gets it, but this is a partnership. This is you, the community, your public safety fund. So I want to be able to create it immediately, but I need volunteers to be part of that. Cause I, I, I can't be part of it, anyone from the CSD can't be a part of it as far as the oversight. It has to be a group of committee, or, uh, community members. So immediately when it passes, I would like to create that and appoint people through the process. And it's gonna have to be an indefinite, because you have some wants as a community, right? We want more certified officers in traffic control, or whatever it may be. I want to hear from you. This is your fund, this is your money. So I'm not going to wait that year. So that's the other question is, well, what do we do in the meantime? Well, at least we have a life preserver. It's better than what we have now. So, just wanna make that special note. Um, the ballots will be measured, or I'm sorry, be mailed out on Monday. And you have 30 days to get them in the mail and back to the elections office. Uh, it's all mail ballots, and there is one ballot box in the Tatchby area, and it is at the library in town. Does everyone know where the Kern County Library is? Right, right across the street from the, the theater? That is the only one, if you feel more comfortable, or you can even hand-deliver if you're going in the Bakersfield area. But again, it's all mail-in ballots. We paid 13,000 dollars for this because it is a, a special election for us. And there's, I believe there's two in the county. Arvin and us have an election going on, obviously for our own community's needs. And we're going to skip this, uh, for the meantime. And, uh, I'm very humbled and, and honored. Uh, it's my distinct honor to introduce a leader whose career exemplifies service, integrity, and unwavering dedication to Kern County, Chief Charlie Fiveco. With decades of experience in law enforcement, public service, and public administration, Chief Fiveco has earned a reputation as a trusted leader, a strategic thinker, and a tireless advocate of safety, justice, and collaboration. He has worked, he was a Vietnam veteran. Uh, he worked for the Sheriff's Department for many years, he has over 35 years of service. He was the chief of Shafto and created from scratch the current police department in Wasco. It is my, just my honor to introduce Chief Fiveco. Please. Thank you, sir.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm actually the one that's humbled. I, I got here this afternoon, didn't realize who all was gonna be here. Brad Burris and I had served on the Chief's group together, uh, back when I was in Shafto. I worked with Neil Record in the past. Mike Bonzis was an operator on the SWAT team with me when I had the SWAT team. And I had not had the, the pleasure of meeting Gary formally. And I had not had the, the pleasure of meeting Gary, formally, your, your current chief. And we had talked on the telephone a couple of times about this very issue that you're faced with relative, trying to fund your police agency. And the reason I'm here today is because of the conversation I had with him. I had, I don't have a dog in a race, obviously. I live in Bakersfield and I work in Wasco. But when I talked to your chief and he explained to me how much the community meant to him and how valuable he thinks it is to keep his agency, I realized that he and I are both on the same sheet of music. And I'd like to explain that a little bit. I also failed to mention Fred Wheeler. We worked briefly together at CRC. Uh, I worked as a Northern Security Director for California Resources Corporation. And then Fred came to work there and, uh, I left and, uh, the rest is history. So, just a little bit about, I'm not gonna tell you about me cause I'm not that important of a person, but I will tell you about my experience working with contracts and being a contract chief of police with the Sheriff's Department on multiple occasions. And then also being a chief of police for a municipal agency in Shafto. And then as a chief of police now for the city of Wasco. So way back in the day, and I hate to admit that I'm this old, but in nineteen eighty-one, the city of Wasco chose to disband their police department. It was basically based on economics. They couldn't afford to operate their agency. If you know anything about Wasco, it's a, it's a rather disadvantaged community economically. So they disbanded their organization and I was working as a, as a, uh, substation's patrol deputy at that time. So I got to watch from the very beginning of the sheriff's contract all the way until the end of the contract. Nineteen ninety-six, I was asked by Sheriff Sparks to go to Wasco and to serve as a North Area Division Commander. And when I got there, I had two contract cities, the city of McFarland and the city of Wasco. And at that time, the budget for the city of Wasco was about two million dollars. We had sixteen patrol officers. I wasn't included in the salary stuff, I was a division commander. My sargent at the time was Marty Williamson. He was the ex-officio, uh, if you will, chief of police for the city of Wasco. What I noticed during that time is we would come in and we'd do the best policing we could possibly do. And I think we did a good job. We were staffed well. We had a moderate crime problem in Wasco. And everything seemed to be clicking along fine. And I left. Got another transfer, I ended up in East Kern when I got to East Kern. Well, first I went to Metropolitan Bakersfield. Then I came to East Kern and Tehachapi was a contract city. So I ended up being the chief of police for the city of Tehachapi. And some of the things I noticed during that time was you had people, officers, who lived in the areas, both in, in the North Kern area and also in East Kern. And they're, they were very committed to the community because they lived there and they had families there. And they provided a service there. You also had a lot of people that were coming in from out of the area that were working the substations and they would spend the brief amount of time they had to, and then they would try to get a transfer out of the area and so they would leave. So what happened later on is as time went on, the, the economy was starting to impact the Sheriff's Department. You heard Fred Wheeler talk about recruitment and retention issues earlier. What we saw was we were losing a lot of people. We weren't keeping up competitively with salaries and that, that type of thing. And so staffing levels of the Sheriff's Department were depleted quite a bit. So what happens to the contract cities? Well, as a contract city, they only, you're only required as a Sheriff's Department to provide the services that are contracted for. And as the staffing levels continue to decline, we found that the, that the departments was cutting back on the number of officers. Give you an example, Wasco was contracted for sixteen, we ended up with eight before we decided to cancel the contract. I got hired in twenty-twenty-two to go to Wasco to start a new police department. Uh, we looked at the costs that we were paying for the Sheriff's Department, four-point-two million dollars. When we did the stand-up, it was about six-point-one million dollars. But with Measure K passing at the county and the one-cent sales tax coming across the county, county wages went up, sheriff, sheriff's wages went up. So the anticipated cost for contract this year, had we have stayed a contract city, was six-point-three million dollars. So we were able to actually put it together and do it at about the same cost the Sheriff's Department would do it. But instead of having eight deputies, I have thirty-one officers. Yes, ma'am? Yes, the Wasco Police Department was disbanded in nineteen eighty-one. And for forty-three years, it was a contract city. It's kind of an interesting thing to note and something for all of you to think about. So back in two thousand and six, Jeff Kremode came to Tehachapi and became the chief of police for the city of Tehachapi. He built an entire department from the ground up, just like I just got there doing. And they eliminated their contract with the Kern County Sheriff's Department, went back to a municipal model. Three years later, the city of McFarland canceled their contract and went back to a full-time police department. Here we are, twenty-twenty-two, the city of Wasco, the last contract city in the county, decided to go back to their own municipal policing model. Prior to that, there was contracts also in the city of Arvin for a while and the city of Maricopa. Now, the city of Maricopa right now, I think, is still contracting with the city, with the Sheriff's Department. City of Arvin certainly isn't. I, I made some notes. I didn't come here prepared to talk about anything. I came here to, to actually answer questions. But as I was watching the video that you, that you presented earlier, I got to thinking about a comment that a gentleman made in that video. He says, "We know what kind of problems we have in big cities." But here, in fact, the, the quote was, "We know the problems in the big cities and the reason we're here is because we have contact with our officers." And I, I thought that was rather interesting because the, the model that I designed for Wasco that's worked very well for me. Fred, let me pick on you. Uh, eighteen twenty-nine, who's Sir, who's Sir Robert Peel? Yeah, he was the founder of the police department in London, England. And he had nine tenants. He said, "The primary purpose of law enforcement is to keep the peace." And I, I talk to people all the time about it. Our job is not to enforce the law. Our job is to keep the peace, right? And the other thing that, that Robert Peel said, which I have used throughout my career and it's worked for me, the people are the police and the police are the people. How do you have the police being the people if they're not part of your community? That's, that's difficult. So as, as I grew through my profession, I've been at it, I came out of the, I went in the Army in nineteen seventy-one and for fifty-four years, I've either been doing law enforcement work, security work, or been in the military. I went back to the reserves a few years ago. And what I, what I've realized is that the very tenants that Robert Peel made clear back in eighteen twenty-nine are still viable today and they work. So what did we do in Wasco? And I wanted to give it to you as an example so you could see what could potentially happen here. When I went to Wasco, they were averaging five homicides a year. They were averaging between seven and nine attempted homicides a year. Lot of gang issues, lot of violent crime. We came in and using Sir Robert Peel's model, I said, "I want officers on the street. I want them to be visible to the public and I want them to get to know everyone in the community." My city manager, who is kind of a quasi-friend of mine as well, we worked together in Shafto, he says, "You know, it took forty-three years for the crime problems in Wasco to get where they're at today. It's probably gonna take us five or six years to turn that around." And I agreed with him. I said, "Yeah, you're probably right." We were, we're now operational sixteen months. All the cops in the room start knocking on wood. We haven't had any homicides. We haven't had but one attempt homicide. Our, our armed robbery rate dropped sixty-two percent. And the biggest thing I'm dealing with now is domestic violence, drunk drivers, and under-the-influence cases. That seems to be where the big thing is. And vehicle thefts. I don't know what it is about the San Joaquin Valley, but we're like the car theft capital of the universe, I think. So, why did that happen? Did that happen because I'm a great chief now? No, it happened because I had young men and women out there that were committed to do their job and that they were moving around all the time. I'd like to speak of one last thing about communities. We started an idea that I stole from the chief in Richcrest. I said on his interview panel, we selected him as the chief, he came from Tracy. And while I'm talking to him, he had similar problems that we had in Wasco. And I said, "So, so tell me, did you have problems with gangs and, and homeless issues in your city?" And he said, "Oh, absolutely." And I said, "Well, what did you do about it?" And he said, "One of the best tools they came up with was a, a project they called the Ten-Thirteen Program." And I said, "Well, do tell, what is a Ten-Thirteen Program?" And they said, "Well, the call sign or the radio code, Ten-Thirteen, is very seldom used by any police agency. But we're gonna institute a Ten-Thirteen Program. And what that does is when the officers are out on the street and they see just a citizen in the community, perhaps you're pushing your trash barrel out to the corner, the officer would stop and say, 'Hey, good afternoon, how are you? I'm Officer so-and-so. How long have you lived here? What do you think your police agency should be doing for you? Is there any problems in your neighborhood? Is there anything going on that you would like to see changed?'" And what that does is when they code off on a Ten-Thirteen call, that tells dispatch that, "Hey, there's no problem here, it's a citizen contact, so we don't have to send a backup or anything like that." And what's happened as a result of that, the community's talking to us. Whenever the criminals in the community start acting up, we start getting phone calls. And it's been very, very effective. I, I kinda got off on a tangent here talking about what happened out there, but I wanted to make a couple other comments and then I'll take any questions if you have them. How many of you have burglar alarms in your house? Anybody? Okay. You pay about thirty dollars a month for that service, do you? And, and if you have a burglar alarm, they allegedly contact the dispatcher and somebody comes to take care of your problem, right? Okay. So that's about three-hundred-and-sixty dollars a year you're paying for that service. Then burglarize having a burglar alarm. Absolutely. But then what I always think about as, as an old cop is I think, okay, so what is the response time now? And as I was driving over here today and I had to come over the little mountain here, I was thinking to myself, boy, I'd hate to do this in the winter time. And I'd certainly hate to try to do it at a high rate of speed, right? Because that probably wouldn't end well for anyone. So, you've got a time and distance issue. And the last thing I'll say about my, uh, past with departments is a PSAP. So I heard the chief talk earlier about where we'd like to have computers in our cars because it's very hard to make that stop and get the information we need in a timely fashion. One of the things I did in Wasco when we got started, they said, "Chief, what do you think's the most, the highest priority? What do you think we need to do?" And I said, "We need to contact the state of California and tell them that we need our own dispatch center." Now, I wouldn't advocate that, obviously, for you guys, but what I'm, what I, the reason I did that was because we had, we had hired two different studies, one in twenty-ten and one in twenty-eighteen, where we had consultants come in and look at all of the data. Our call to dispatch time on Priority Two calls, which are not life-threatening calls, was sixteen and a half minutes. That burglar, burglar alarm that you're talking about would have been that Priority Two or Three call, right? So we decided that if we were gonna have the citizens develop confidence in us, we needed to reduce that time. And the only way we could see to do it was to put in our own comm center. So that's what we did. But just like running twenty-eights, twenty-nines registration checks and whatnot in the car, if you're constantly waiting for dispatcher to be able to take that, that information and get a response to you, a lot of bad things happen on the side of the road in very short time. So, just some, some observations there. I think that, um, one of the things that the chief said to me when he called me, you must have done your homework, by the way. Because, uh, he called me up and we did not know each other. And, uh, he said, "Hey," he says, "I understand that in the media, you've made the comment that if, if a community can afford their own police department, they should have their own police department." And I have said that. And it comes down to the things that were on your slide, chief. It comes down to, uh, being connected to the community. Uh, being, uh, involved with the community. And, uh, it also comes down to local control for you folks. But anyway, I guess I should probably be quiet and see if you have any questions.
No, thank you, chief. Um, so I have a wireless mic. If you have a question for either one of the chiefs, please raise your hand and I will bring the microphone to you.
Currently, according to what I hear from the community center, uh, for a police non-emergency, uh, there's a number to call. And that goes directly to the Kern County Sheriff. Now, my question is, if I dial nine-one-one for an emergency, who answers that call? Where does that dispatch go?
That goes to the comm center as well. They have emergency lines and non-emergency lines.
So that's Kern County Sheriff?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So then our, we serve by Kern County Sheriff or our local police?
You're served by Kern County Sheriff's Department for your dispatch.
I see. So then, uh, a Kern County Sheriff would respond to the nine-one-one call?
No, no, sir. What they would do is they would tran, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but they would, they would actually dispatch Stallion Springs to handle that call.
So then the call would be red dispatched to here?
That's correct.
I see.
Yes, sir. So just, just for some clarification, Stallion Springs Police Department, we do not currently have a dispatch center.
And you don't need one.
We, and we don't need one because they're expensive. But the, the Sheriff's Department, they're operators, if you will. They're, and they're the ones that are handling, but they dispatch directly to Stallion Springs. Okay? Does that help you? Yeah? Okay. I wanted to make sure you understood the answer.
And, and please let me clarify that for you. So, we were talking about call to dispatch time for the city of Wasco down in the Metro Net, okay? And up here, when the, when the call goes out, it goes directly to your people from the comm center.
Uh, this is a bit off the subject, I mean, it's on the same subject. I mean, we always, we always love to have police in our community.
Yes, ma'am.
That is, I mean, I think a hundred percent of the people would say they would, they love to have that protection, that, the camaraderie of the community. I, I stand behind that a hundred percent. My question is, okay, we have all this funding and I'm looking at the percentages. I'm thinking, well, fifty dollars, was that a, a year or every six months? Uh, but anyway, a year. So, so we're gonna go from fifty dollars, we're gonna go like, not, not a hundred percent, not to a hundred. We're gonna go to, not to two-hundred, we're gonna go to two-seventy-something. Whoo! I mean, I, I've been self-employed all my life. I could never even increase. I, I couldn't even get a pension. You know? I mean, uh, that's like, a hundred, two-hundred, that's like way, a big percentage hike from fifty. So, not to be negative or anything, but I mean, that really freaks me out because that was never available to me as a self-employed person. But then, um, then I'm looking at, okay, grants. Grants are a very good source. So, I mean, I personally, I would say definitely get on that because they're there and you can get grants. You just find them and then you just You just find them and then you just get them. So I'm saying, I know, you need a, you need a specialist. I know. I mean, I've studied, I've studied grants. I've, I've taken the courses and stuff, but you need a specialist. They're not, not easy. But you can go to the city clerk and you can ask them and you can look them up documents in the county. Okay, I have a whole catalog on it. I'll give it to you. I, I'm to do it, but a whole catalog on how to get grants. So, um, two actually. So I'm saying that, okay, you have this certain salary. So if you, um, if you start getting the grants, is it possible that people could get rebates? Like if you got, somebody started working on getting the grants, like rebate it back? Like say if you go from 50, you go to like 2, 270 something now a year. And, but if the grants start coming in, maybe the, the people could be compensated back. Um, that was my question.
Yeah, so, okay, so the 275, why are we going from $50 to 275? Yes, it sounds like a big jump. The Public Safety Committee put a tremendous amount of work and a lot of hours into studying and coming up with that number. The reality is, these conversations should have happened 15 years ago. $50 per year, per parcel, generating $122,000 a year is not one patrol officer. It doesn't cover one patrol officer. And a lot of people say, oh, my gosh, I would love to have a job that I make $122,000 a year. But if you listen to what I'm saying, it's, it's one officer. That's their equipment, their patrol car, the gas for their patrol car. Everything that goes into having one officer, okay? So the 275, we are, as a district and as a board, felt that that was a conservative number. In, in reality, look at the other budgets for the other departments. It, we're still over a million dollars lower than the surrounding areas. Um, and then the other answer I can, I can share with you before I pass it to chief is, as far as the rebates, no, that would not be lawful. Once a tax is passed, it's passed and it stays on the books.
Thank you, Lauren Lynn. So again, good question. Uh, I don't know if we really touched on it like we have in the past. But as a special district, we are exempt from funding that traditional cities and counties have. So for instance, when we, all of us, I'm going to go on a limb, all of us go into the city to buy groceries. Is that fair to say? Yes? Okay. When you make that purchase, there's sales tax that go right back to the police department, right back to City Tehachapi's general fund, right? We don't have that because we're a special district. So they have additional funding that is coming in. So they also did a measure a couple of years ago, similar to Measure K, which was the Kern County. So there was, uh, Bakersfield was first. They went to their community and said, we want a 1% increase on sales tax. It passed. Uh, City Tehachapi then did the same, 1% tax for their services. They got it. And then Measure K for the county. Now Measure K did come to our county, came to our community trying to pass that measure. So all the sales tax that's generated at all of our local establishments, which is also a hurtful thing, but not really, is, we don't have a lot of industry here, right? We're kind of unique as a community. But all the money that gets generated, sales tax money, goes entirely to the county. So when you're, when you're pumping your gasoline, the state and federal tax, all those type of things that you, if it's in Stallion or outside area, we don't get any other money. So the only time that we've received money from the community, because again, it, it's a sad reality that this is the only way. Because you look at it as, we are non-enterprise. We're a police department that we cannot make money, okay? Water, sewer, those type of things, obviously they have their own obstacles, but they're enterprise. They're able to generate money. We are just stuck because there's no funding source. We did a study, uh, the general manager at the time, uh, to look at the socioeconomic status of our community. And it was determined that we are roughly $10,000 to $12,000 more than the average median, which takes us out of a lot of grants. So yes, like I've mentioned, we, uh, we went after a, several grants, the COPS grant, the Rural Tribal, was it Rural Tribals something, grant for body worn cameras. We applied for those things with professionals and, you know, me trying to find the time to do that. And it's not a guarantee. It's very competitive. Yes, you do need to have your own grant writers, watch the district has paid. And they're not as aggressive as you like and they still need the assistance of district staff. And the thing is, it's not a guarantee. Uh, again, the Biden administration, not to get in politics, but again, they put a freeze on a lot of the grants and things. So there's obstacles all the way, but we're still looking at grants. We're still looking for different funding. We did go, uh, and were able to fund the police building, the administrative building, because those who've lived here a little bit longer, you saw our humble beginnings. For those who do not know, everyone know where the trash, the trash site is, the transfer site? That little building right there? That was the police department. So you, the community, thankfully, you looked at that, we came to you and you said, the police need a better, better station. And then the community service district piggybacked off that and it was $50 per year. So that had a sunset date. We were under budget and we said, hey, community, would you like to try to roll that to the police services? Said you're already paid. You, the community spoke and said, yes. So of the funding that this community has, with the exception of the property taxes, which I've told you is not guaranteed, that is the only funding that we've been able to receive with grants that have trickled in here and there. So we want to continue exploring those things. We can, you know, if this does not pass, we will have to reassess and go with the budget that we have. But again, humbly, I'm going to say it's probably, the, the department's going to go away by attrition because the problems remain the same. If we don't have any additional funding source, you know, we may have to look at maybe a lower number. But that costs the district, it costs you time, energy and money. And the fact of the matter is those officers really going to stay there. That's a question to be asked.
If I might add to some of that conversation. So city of Wasco passed Measure X, which was a 1% sales tax too. And it dawned on me as we were talking, you guys are in a really tough position because if the only funding you have is through this assessment, that's why it's hard to keep up with recruitment issues and retention issues. In the case of the city of Wasco, when we started that department, myself and the city manager looked at it and we said, we need to come in at the 80 percentile as far as salary comparisons to Tulare County and all the agencies in Kern. So when we started out, we started out at 80% of the salary and benefit range of all the other agencies. So to everyone's surprise, I was fully staffed before I opened the doors. But then what happened was Measure K happened, Measure L happened, our Measure X happened. And what happened is all those agencies raised their, their wages in order to stay competitive. Kern County Sheriff's Department got a big jump, right? And we were, we were actually recruiting people away from the sheriff's department. When I was in Chaffter, probably half of my staff I, I managed to get from the sheriff's department because we had a lot of money, right? And, and so that's the name of the game. And it's, it's unfortunate because we talk about it in our business and we go, this is self-defeating. You can't continually raise salaries and benefits and stay competitive. In your case, when I look at, when I look at the work that was done by this committee and a compliment to all of you guys, Fred, because you, you cut it close. I mean, there's no room, there's not really a lot of wiggle room there. It, it was very conservative for sure. But that's what caused all those things to happen.
If our, if this doesn't pass and our police force is disbanded, is the CSD going to be required to pay a fee to Kern County sheriffs?
I would like to talk to that a little bit, if you don't mind. And I'm sorry to commandeer the time, but, so the Wasco City contract was signed in 2021. And quite frankly, I was surprised when I saw it. Uh, there was a lot of provisions in there where things had changed from when I was there in 96. When I was there in 96, a lot of services provided by the sheriff were not charged to us. Search and rescue, detective, SWAT, uh, helicopter, those kinds of things were not charged back to us. But, and I actually brought this with me, I'm doing a report for the city now. The, the Kern County Board of Supervisors passed a provision, which was called Section 821 and Section 908 of the County Administrative Manual. And this is what it says. "The intent to recover full cost of service. The full cost of service should be calculated for all county services to provide a basis for setting fees and charges. Full cost should include direct and indirect costs. Calculations should be reviewed annually and changed, and changed for each department." 908.4, which is the one that just really hit us hard, was "Charges to an outside agency. Charges by the county department, the county department to a governmental agency outside the county may include, in, in addition to the categories listed above, a factor for county overhead and a bill that includes all of the county costs." So when you were talking about your assessment fee and you said, oh, so it's, what was the number, 500? You said it was $522 on your, because there was an administrative cost. That's a directory.
It's $50 and 22 cents.
I'm sorry, so $50 plus 22 cents. That 22 cents is part of that section. So what happened to us in Wasco was, if you remember Deputy Campus, the only SWAT officer ever killed in the line of duty. The investigation of that case required $42,000 in overtime. Guess who paid for that $42,000 in overtime? We did. So I don't know if that would happen here. And as a special district, it, it, the thought I had as I was driving up is perhaps as a special district, if you said, we're not going to have a police department, the county might have to provide services to you. I don't know. But if it's a contract arrangement, and I'd have to ask your advice on that. If you were going to enter into a contract, just remember it's a cost, dollar cost recovery for all costs.
Yes. So the, the answer, kind of long, short answer is, Joel, yes. Um, we, the special district, we have designated, they're called powers. And, um, if any of you maybe know what LAFCO is, it's a local agency formation commission. They are at the county at Kern level. And they set boundaries of special districts and they grant the powers of special districts. So we have park and recreation power, we have sewer, we have trash, we have water. LAFCO says that we can provide all of those things, right? And one of those things is law enforcement. So if this does not pass, the district is going to have to look at, how do we continue to provide some type of law enforcement? Is it private security driving around? Is it looking at a contract with the sheriff's department that we've now learned is extremely expensive? I mean, we can't, if we can't afford to operate on the budget we have now, how are we going to pay four, $6 million contract? It's not possible. Or the district would have to go to LAFCO and petition LAFCO to remove that power from our charter. So I hope that kind of answers your question. We're, we're not, um, I'm sorry, I was moving on.
So again, yes, this parcel tax is to help fund the police department. So again, it's your public safety fund. That's option number one. If it does not pass, we have to reassess, see how we're going to be able to continue providing level service. Again, we've been doing this for, so again, we're, we're trying to do more. We're trying to keep what we have. Option number two is contract like Lauren Lynn and the chief said, okay? Obviously with the money that we, we've mentioned here today, where there's a huge disparity between the two figures. Uh, I think, uh, the advocacy group that, that is out there in Stallion, they got a quote from the county saying, the first year for services for Kern, for Stallion Springs will be 2.5 million. After that first year, it's 1.5, okay? With the Kern County Sheriff's Department. Again, that's not my words, they'll be able to speak on that. That's the numbers, okay? Option number three is, like if you were in a community like Roseman or Boron, North Edwards, those areas that are unincorporated, they're not cities or, but they have obviously municipalities, right? Those are non-contract cities. The sheriff still provides services, but they, it's on a call basis. Meaning the Tehachapi substation will have officers and they'll be able to respond to your calls for service, but they're not going to be patrolling out here. They're going to be responding from Tehachapi or beyond. And the reason why I'm going to bring this up is because it's factual. About two weeks ago, about 11:30 at night, there was Tehachapi units that were in Mojave. And there was an infant not breathing. And the closest units were obviously Mojave. I asked, I said, I'm able to respond. And again, this is a reciprocal thing, they do this to us all the time. If you're asking for my assistance, I will respond, which I did. They said, yes, please, because I was the closest unit. No, to, sorry, Golden Hills. Golden Hills. There was a call in Golden Hills. I apologize for that. So again, they're responding, Code 3 lights and sirens, which is extremely dangerous, as well as myself. But again, we're helping them, they help us. That's the, you, you do pay taxes to help go to that. Again, in Kern, in, uh, in the state of California, per penal code, there's five police departments that are community service districts that have police departments. Only five. Tehachapi being very, very unique because we have two of them, us and Bear Valley Springs, okay? So by law, we are in the penal code, giving us the power just like any of our constituents of municipal or, or county, because we have powers, police powers. If we were to get away from that, we would have to again, petition LAFCO to see if there would be another service provider, could be Tehachapi, Bear Valley, Arvin, oddly Wasco, if we were to go branch out that, is who could provide that level of service? Because as it's written right now, there's a requirement for the community service district to continue to provide some sort of law enforcement service. But again, how are we going to pay, be able to pay for that?
I'll be right with you, sir. Um, I want to touch on something too, and use it just kind of as, as an example of some of the challenges special district faces when it comes to finances. I'm going to use the community swimming pool as an example. The community swimming pool lost $4,000 last year. It costs the special district $4,000 to have the community swimming pool open. Lifeguards are a must. You cannot operate a community public pool without lifeguards on duty. Our lifeguard makes $17 an hour. I just saw an advertisement for a fast food restaurant hiring starting rate $22 an hour. That's what we're competing with. That's why we struggle to recruit lifeguards every year. That's rigorous training. That is a life-saving job. And you're going to make $7, January, you're going to go make tacos and hamburgers for 22. So some of that stuff, it, some of these outlying things that we're having to compete with are a day-to-day factor too.
I want, I want to add to that too. So fast food worker here in California went up to like $80 now, is that right? Twenty, okay, so, $20, you just started. Is it true that our officers are making $14 more than a fast food worker? That's what I pay my officers, that's the reality. Again, right runner difference, that's just the reality of what we're even supposed to do.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll, I'll go ahead and put this thing down, but I just. But if you have any questions, I would like to answer them. Okay, please. Not, not for me. Okay, and, and the thing I'd like to leave you with, these departments are real easy to take apart. They're real hard to put back together. So the last thing I'll say about that, when I started Wasco PD, it took me a year and two months to get CLETS access. Which CLETS access is the ability to run criminal histories, driver's license checks and whatnot. There's a lot of bureaucracy in it. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts in having a department. And like I say, they're easy to get rid of, but they're not real easy to put back together. And like I say, they're easy to get rid of, but they're not real easy to put back together. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief Fico.
Okay, so my question, I actually have two questions, and I don't know, it's probably for you Lauryn. The empty lots parcels, how is it decided that the parcels that don't have homes on them or structures on them are being charged full? They intend to have that for the same fee as the lots with a house on it? And who are the actual voters? Is it the property, the landowners, or is it the people, if they're renters? Who are the actual owners? Understood. Okay, so, election law, we're going to get into just a little bit. This is a special tax. By election law, for special taxes, all registered voters within the district boundary will receive a ballot. That's a little bit different. What am I doing?
Do you not view?
Oh, I don't need to be in view? Sorry. I'm sorry. I know there was somebody else over there with a question, so I was hovering in the vicinity. Anyway, so, the way that it's taxed between an assessment, when you have an assessment on your tax roll right now for roads, okay? Assessments are for infrastructure purposes. Special taxes are for services provided, such as law enforcement. So, the way that the special tax law is written, election law, and this comes from the state level, it will be a flat rate per parcel, per year, and all registered voters within the district boundary will receive a ballot.
I think that still leaves the question, if you have a landowner here but lives outside the district, then they will not be voting, is that correct?
They will vote for where they're registered to vote. So, if you have a landowner, there's a landowner that owns a lot in Stallion Springs, they live in Long Beach, and the city of Long Beach is where they're registered to vote, they would not get a ballot. You are correct.
So, with their, okay, they don't get a ballot, so whatever they would have voted on, had they gotten the ballot, doesn't count, because they didn't get a ballot here, correct? So, it's not a, it doesn't affect the vote at all? Okay. The, this is more of a comment than a question. I know some people are getting hung up on the 275, but actually, the monthly increase would be $19. You know, before, with the $50 assessment, it was $4 a month, but now it'll be an additional $19 a month for $23 a month, correct? Am I saying?
So, I went to Tehachapi High School, so my math's really poor, but...
Okay.
Sorry Superintendent. I believe it's still 20, is 23?
It's 23, but the actual increase that we have to pay is $19 a month.
It's 23.
No, in addition, the increase, the added amount is $19 a month.
So, I think if you break, if you add the $50 to the 275, it's roughly 27?
Oh, you're adding 50 to the 275?
Yes.
Oh, then you're, then you're up to 325 a year?
Yes. You're already paying $50, that doesn't go away.
Correct.
This is an addition to that.
Okay, it's an addition to it?
Correct.
Okay. And so, divide that by 12, how much?
27 and some change.
Well, okay, so, how much do you pay for television, Netflix, Hulu, Paramount Plus, whatever else? You know, how important is this compared to that? You know, I value my safety, I value the police department, and I want that security. And I have seen the police department in action, and it is, I mean, they've come to our place a couple of times, Sergeant has done that, is he still here? Anyway, you know, so, I value the police department greatly, and I think we all should. And also, it will help our property values to have that. People will feel safer coming here if there's a police department. And please remember that costs don't stay the same year to year, they only go up. So, you know, this amount that they're requesting, I think is very reasonable. I'm sorry to take that.
Sorry. No. No. Again, it's going to be registered voters within the district boundary. They will get a ballot. If you own a parcel and you live in another state or county and you're registered to vote there, and that's where your primary residence is, you will not receive a ballot. And that is election law. Yes, it has nothing to do with how many lots you own. If you reside in a home where there's two adults and a child over the age of 18, and all three of them are registered voters, three ballots will go to that household. Registered voters within the district boundary. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to squeeze through here just a second. I'll be right with you.
Did you have a question? Oh.
I'd like to remind folks that, and Chief Burris is here and others, that several years ago, we actually had a hostage situation here that our head to handle. And Gary, you were here at that time, but we had another chief at that time. But, and that was not far away from our neighborhood. I mean, it was right here in the center of Stallion, down here in the flats. And that was admirably, superbly handled. Nobody got hurt, nobody was shot, but it's a miracle. And that was thanks to our police. If we didn't have police here, that kind of thing, I believe, would happen more often with family disputes, et cetera.
Just curious, I don't know this, Lynetta Sue, you might know, but the percentage of renters versus homeowners in Stallion, I feel like the homeowner percentage of registered voters are a lot more than the tenant population, in my, okay? So, that is people voting for their own property taxes and their own home payment.
Yes, I'll be right over there. And Chief and I were talking about this, because we did, we received a lot of questions about how this was, you know, how the ballots were going to go out. And I would consult an attorney for further details, but one of the scenarios that we kind of came up with was, the way that this law is written, it's actually to, it protects rural communities from one person or two people deciding for all. So, we just kind of kicked that around and wanted to mention that.
And we do have large landowners that if, hypothetically, if this was structured differently, that don't live here, if they were the ones who were making that, they are able to speak on behalf of the whole community solely with those two people. So, again, the way the super majority, because that's the way the law is written as a Prop 218, it's saying it's not just the majority, it's an overwhelming majority, and I think that's where they were looking at it as, that's the balance. Because again, you know, nothing's perfect, certainly not politics. I believe that's really what they were looking at, because it's very difficult for municipalities to pass these laws. I mean, there's no secret about it, but we are doing what cities and counties are mandated to do. We're held by that same standard.
This is not a question, this is a comment. My wife and I are on fixed income, so I'm going to assist her on to what somebody said earlier. We took a couple of young people to Sonic a few weeks ago, and it was probably $27, $30. That's one meal. This is just $27 additionally per month. And like I said, that was just one meal at Sonic, and the benefit of this positive vote, I think is overwhelming. That's my comment. Thank you.
One question I have is, you know, everybody's, I'm sure their fire insurance has all gone up this last year because of what's happened. What is going to happen if we don't have a police department out here and the insurance companies also say, you don't have any protection for out there? Now, your insurance is going to go up so much money a month. So, I don't know if anybody's thought of that, but that is something that we all have to look at, so.
And thanks for bringing that up. There's a, I went down a wormhole, because some people were making some comments of the preference of the fire department over the police department. Again, we're first responders, we all have different responsibilities. What, those who do not know, I'm sure, and if you do, just humble me for a minute, our local police or fire station, Station 18, is actually mostly funded by CAL FIRE. How many knew that? It's called a gray book station. What a gray book station is, in rural areas, they, CAL FIRE, state of California, pays the local fire department to have a presence there, because they're basically local responders. So, your sales, the taxes that you pay, property taxes, things like that, but ultimately, a large portion comes from CAL FIRE. I was hoping that a fire friend of mine who's a captain was going to be here today to kind of speak on it, but I'm here to speak on it. If you want to go to the Kern County Fire website, they do that annually. They'll tell you all the contract from the state to the county and what they're getting. So, what that is, is if we were to have a wildfire anywhere in the area, because we're the outlying station, they're pulling from our station to backfills their verbiage, those other stations. So, there are some times when your local fire department is not available for medical aids, fires, things like that. Again, last year, we had a wildfire, right? Search and rescue assisted this. That didn't cost us a cent, didn't cost us a dime, we didn't pay for anything. Again, our volunteers, those are things that, the relationships that we've built over time. How many people heard about the murder that happened two weeks ago? No, in the Cummings Valley? Actually, it happened in Golden Hills, come to find out. But there was a body found in the Cummings Valley. How many knew that it was officer who's the one that found the body? They didn't put that in the news release. But unfortunately, the relationships that we are able to get for citizens, criminals, and our law enforcement and emergency responder personnel, we're able to get information and obviously, you know, deal with it as needed. There was also some information that we were able to provide the Tehachapi Police Department that was helpful in their search warrants, which was also publicized. So, again, the way we do our job is not just isolated to our area, it's Tehachapi and beyond. I mean, we've had some investigations where people are looking online and believe you're an affluent area and they're using Google Maps. In fact, someone mentioned the home invasion robbery. Most people don't know that they, well, number one, they had a crime syndicate going all around Kern County, but some people didn't know that they actually committed a, or attempted a strong arm robbery in Oildale before they came here. And why did they come, why did they come to Stallion Springs? We did a search warrant on their phones, and lo and behold, what's a wealthy area in Kern County? Sadly, a search engine, I can't say who it is, because I'll probably get sued, but a search engine said Stallion Springs. So, what do they do? Those individuals come here. And it's very rare for them to leave, but they came back less than a week later, and we were able to successfully catch them, and most of those are in prison now. Sadly, one of the juveniles who was released, because he was a juvenile, he committed a murder based on our police report. Someone got a copy of our police report and basically said he was a snitch, he then murdered those people in Lancaster. Sad, it's a sad story, but again, we can only do what we can, but we're not susceptible to having these type of things impact you. Is it very rare? Yes. In the two decades that I've been here, there's been four SWAT callouts. It's not very many, but we've had helicopters, we've had search and rescue, we've had all these different departments assisting us in our times of need, and we reciprocate it by doing the same.
Chief, tell everybody how our sergeant, your sergeant stopped those guys, how brave he was. That was just, that's why we need you guys.
To say it briefly, believe it or not, there was people that wanted my head on a pike. It was my, almost my year anniversary as a police chief. And there was people who were upset with me, said, we want you gone, you've done us wrong. Yeah, I know, it's kind of odd, but it is what it is. I was not sleeping. I don't drink, I was drinking, not on duty, just clarified. We were doing patrols all over, we had very minimal leads. Again, like I mentioned, it's very rare for a crime syndicate to come back like they did. Well, come to find out, they came with, I think it was one or two different individuals, but they were doing crime in a Prius with no plates that had veteran stickers all over it. But anyway, we got this information out to you, the masses, masses, the general public, this is what to kind of look for, what we could talk about, because again, sometimes people are critical of what we do, just nature of the job. And we were doing patrols all hours of the night, 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and rotating shifts. So, Sergeant Bosnis, he's not here, but he was actually with his daughter, probably doing a ride along that he may or may not should have been doing, but she was originally was there and then she left, I'm glad. But he was, we got information that there was someone knocking on the door, and we responded, and I was on duty after the fact, but we were able to basically contain it to our area. He saw a vehicle going down St. Andrews that matched the vehicle that we already had that lead on. We didn't know how many people were in that car. Come to find out, I think there was eight guns in the car, four individuals with tac gear. He does a stop by himself, I'm at the Pac Bell building, he makes the stop for about a minute and a half, he's by himself. He doesn't know what's going to happen. He doesn't know these individuals have been doing crimes all over the place, or they just did a crime somewhere else, okay? He does the felony stop, luckily, nothing happens, we get him into custody, we're asking for the whole county to come. Kern County, CHP, Tehachapi, everyone heard about it, and everyone heard about the original thing, so we had a ton of resources, but it takes time. Again, those are things that do happen. Sergeant Bosnis really is a gem. He is really a gem of Kern County. Can't say the wonderful things that he has done for Kern County and certainly our area. Best decision I ever made was to hire him, he said he was going to do me one year. He's coming up on six. So, again, it's a dangerous job, we signed up for it. Again, I'm not pushing your vote one way or another, this is what we signed up for, but again, it's just, how do we continue providing the level of service that you expect into the future? Again, there's obviously arguments of what we can and cannot do. Obviously, this tax measure is important for us, for a vision of us continuing and improving what we have. Because again, I would like to see this be here, you know, another 10, 20, 30, 40 years. But if there's no change, and again, unfortunately, the state of California doesn't do us any favors, federal government doesn't do favors. A lot of people don't know that we have to do, anytime we detain someone, we have to do about a 20 questionnaire and give it to the Department of Justice. That costs us about $5,000 a year. Charlie, how much does it cost for Rupa data for your agency? Fees, jail fees. Believe it or not, it costs money for you to send someone to jail. Believe it or not, when I'm doing, when I get a sexual assault case, it costs us $1,200 for us to process it. Not the victim, not the victim, you don't want to, you don't want to do that to the victim, you want to do it to suspect, right? DUIs, costs us $500. Per law, which was antiquated from the 1970s, they only pay $50 Per law, which was antiquated from the nineteen-seventies, they only pay fifty dollars. So, there's a lot of these different fees that are constantly getting hit to law enforcement that, on a bottom line. There was one year where we were very aggressive with DUIs. How many people think that DUIs are important in our community, as being aggressive? Okay? Again, five hundred dollars a pop, we had to spend over eight thousand dollars that year. And we can't measure that. We don't know how many drunk drivers we're gonna get off the road, but those are the things, is there's so many costs that are, that hit our bottom line. And I don't wanna say that I'm not, I'm not gonna enforce, you know, drunk drivers because we don't have the money. I can't say that, we have to do our job. In fact, there was one across the street just last week. Sorry? It goes to different agencies. So, for instance, booking fees, that goes to the Kern County. No? No? And that's why, again, the masses don't know these stories from the source. It's frustrating, exactly. Sorry.
If this passes, how many officers are you hoping to hire?
Well, we've always said we were looking for five. I mean, it's gonna take some time. We don't have an administrative assistant, so again, it's very abnormal, or just, I should say, unorthodox for like, the police chief to do patrol. I'm just a glorified patrol officer, it is what it is. But to have a secretary dedicated to the police department, I mean, you're generally gonna have a whole division just for that. So, I would like to have either a part-time or full-time clerk, because it's not really fair for the officers to continue doing body cams, evidence, all those type of things that are mandated by law, state and federal. I would hope that we could try to get to the four or five mark. In addition to that, again, some people are wanting us to say how much percentage-wise are going to a certain thing. You know, the patrol vehicles are, they're becoming very antiquated, they're breaking down, costs us a lot of money. They cost about sixty thousand dollars apiece, with everything, bells and whistles and all that. You know, if we don't pay for it now, we can at least put it in a fund where we're able to use it next year or the year after that, as opposed to I go to the district, and we cross our fingers and hope that there's money there available all the time. So, long story short, I would like to try to get to the four or five, don't hold me to that, but we definitely need some administrative staff. Our volunteers are very, very helpful. Some things they can and cannot do be due to the nature of our confidential information, even if you do go through that process of getting vetted, but there's several needs within the department. But I would like to get to the, at least the four to the five mark in the short term. But again, we don't get money for another year.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a statement about Gary Crowell. My late husband had a stroke ten and a half years ago, and I was at a PAL meeting, I was sitting on the PAL board at the time, and I went home and found my husband unconscious on the ground, and obviously called 911. If you know me, you know I live a half a block from the fire station. First person at my house was Sergeant Crowell. Second person at my house was Chief Grant. The fire department drove past my house because they told them the man was in the middle of the street. So, they're going up St. Andrews looking for my husband in the middle of the street. Couldn't do it without him.
Other questions? I'll get my steps in.
That DUI suspect a couple weeks ago? Did he go to jail?
Yes.
Did he? Rose and I saw that. We were right there. And we, that was like insane what he was doing.
Yeah.
I mean, how bad was he?
I think he was like, three times over the limit.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
We do have some additional information coming from our support group, Bill Siverson as well, so if you guys wanna stay around just for a little bit more longer after we finish these questions. Again, we cannot advocate, I'm not telling you to vote yes or no, we're just here to simply educate you. So, it's just them, obviously, giving the information as far as what they can talk about further.
Can you estimate the difference in response time between what it would cost, what it would take for one of your officers to get to my house, or someone from Tehachapi, or wherever, to get to my house? It's gotta be a big...
So, I had a mnemonic device right in front of you the whole time, but I haven't used it. So, on average, it takes about twenty-five minutes for someone else from outside of Stallion to respond, on average, and you would be able to see that. Even if I needed a backing unit, it's gonna take about twenty-five minutes for someone to help support my officer. We contacted, I contacted Kern County Sheriff's Department, they said, "When we're on duty," remember, we're not on twenty-four hours a day, but we're available twenty-four hours a day, so when we're on duty, it is on average taking us two minutes to respond. That's exceptional. Now, again, with our staffing right now, that might be significantly different, because like, some of those things that I shared earlier, some of those cases I was on for four to thirteen hours. So, of course, I'm not gonna be able to respond, or my other officer would not be able to respond in that two-minute, or even a twenty-five-minute time period. So, it's, it's under perfect circumstances, when we have sufficient staffing and we're on duty, two minutes is very good. I know there's people who are critical, saying that we are not on duty at eight PM, that is a fallacy. Again, if you want to do a public records request to look at my timesheet, by all means, I encourage you to do so. We are out at nighttime, and we are varying our times. We are trying to provide the highest level of service we can, but there's two of us. You gotta do the math. It's unsustainable.
Something else too, chief, that you touched on at one of the other town halls, was some of the time to have to book your suspects at Laredo, and the fact that we don't have a jail here.
So, does everyone know where Laredo is? So, you have Bakersfield, how long does it take to drive to Bakersfield? An hour roughly, right? So, add another twenty, twenty-five minutes of driving, that's just to get to jail, okay? Once we get there, we have to go through a booking process, we have to see a nurse, they may reject them. Now, if they reject them, then we gotta go to the hospital, Kern Medical Center. An officer is expected to be there from eight to twelve hours, on a good day. If it's on a bad day, where a lot of trauma, a lot of things going in Kern County, you're gonna be there longer. One trip down there, you're gonna stay roughly hour and twenty, hour and thirty, just for transportation one way, and then the officer has to drive back. So, again, in times when we're arresting people, and we only have one officer on duty at the time, again, our response is gonna be very slow. Now, we have a relationship with our partners, just like they do with us, where if it's an in-progress call, they're initially gonna respond. They're not gonna leave you hanging and say, "Oh, well, there's no Stallion unit available, it's a priority call." No, they're going to initially assist us, wait for us to get there, you know, stabilize the situation, and then kinda go from there. But going back to the fire department as well, a lot of times, people don't understand, if there's a, let's say there was a call for service where it was a man down, victim of a gunshot wound, and there's a man with possibly a weapon, fire department can't respond. They can respond, oh, I should say, they're responding, but they can't go to the scene. Why do you think that is? That's right. So, again, if you're going for another agency, that's twenty-five minutes away on a good day, right? 'Cause it depends on where they are. You have your Tehachapi units, and we'll say, they're in the area when it's fifteen minutes. In a life-saving emergency time period, is that efficient? 'Cause again, those seconds, thirty seconds, might seem like two hours in a situation like that. And that's, you know, in certain situations, it's gonna be way more than that, sometimes it might be less. But yes, the fire department cannot respond until law enforcement render it safe. We go in there, make sure it's safe, now, emergency services, EMS, fire, they can actually then start rendering life-saving measures, as well as law enforcement. But that's another fallacy that's been put out as well.
Well, the one thing we all have to understand, you know, Gary takes his life, you know, in jeopardy every day doing his job, and if we didn't have Gary, who do we have to take the place of Gary that would do the thought and, you know, aspect of it? And I just, I worry that if we don't do this with the aspect of keeping the police department here, if we've gotta rely on city Tehachapi or somewhere, by the time they got out here, there's gonna be, somebody's life is gonna be gone. So, I mean, thank God we have you, Gary.
Anybody else have a question? Okay. I told you we don't allow a lot of time, we want everybody to have their time. And again, chief and I are always available. I'm in the office, seven to five-thirty Monday through Thursday, and you know, if you go home and you think of something, "Oh, I should've asked this," or that, just give us a call or stop by, and we're happy to speak with you. Yes, ma'am.
Can you recite to us what you're paid, can you recite to us, please, the miniscule amount that you're paid to be on duty at night when you're not in the off, on call? I'm sorry.
Again, I chose this profession, and I chose my school. I chose to be a salary employee. I do not get on-call time, so that time, I was working by myself for eleven days, I did not get compensated besides my salary. I get called out multiple times, I think it was five or six times. It definitely takes a toll. It takes a toll, not only on me, on my health, I'm gonna be totally honest. I was working a hospital. I don't like to talk about weakness, but I was basically in a bad situation. You wanna remind me, that's my office, I don't want you to really speak on that, but that's my life. So, I'm trying to do the best I can, but I can't, I can't continue to hold up unless I get help. And with the help, I don't know which form it's gonna come in. I mean, again, I, there's people who said they're more than willing to be volunteers. I need people to oversee my volunteers. You know, you have our CERT organization, they're pretty much independent from us, but again, you know, if you're not around, they're at risk of not having a sponsoring agency as well. So, we are just merely part of the community, we're not better than the community, we're just a part of it, but if you just look at it for what it is, it's not a sustainable model. And if either we look at change, and again, I'm open to looking at other things that I can do better, but with the funding that we have currently, it's not, it's not enough for us to continue five or ten years down the line. This tax measure is to try to get to them at this point. I mean, again, at some point, we're gonna have to look at a model, potentially, looking for a joint service agreement with multiple agencies, because again, it's getting harder and harder unless our state, federal government lays up on us. Because they're not giving us any money. That's the simple thing, is they are simply not giving us, I hate that I have to do this, but we haven't done it. It's the only way.
Any more questions for chief? Yes, sir.
Hello, chief, and I'm Johnny Faddis. How are you?
I'm doing well, Johnny.
I've got a question that everyone should know. We're in a search and rescue team, so if you're gone, we're gone.
Got a question?
Yeah.
So, CERT has the option, if we're not, if we're not a police department, we are your sponsoring agency. The community service district is a sponsoring agency. If we are no longer in existence, the police department, CERT could then try to find an additional...
They could, they could find an additional sponsor. That would be very difficult, because in Kern County, I think there's only two CERT teams in Kern County that are sponsored by the police department, and that's us and Richcrest. Is it impossible? No, but that would take a lot of digging and fact-finding to see what your options would be. So, I wouldn't say that you wouldn't have options, but it would be very, very difficult. Again, the relationship that we've had, almost in a twenty-year time period, has been, you know, that relationship building. You would have to look at someone who has either the fire department, which is the bigger model for CERT teams, or another police agency.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, is anybody that's registered in Kern County going to get this so we can vote? I mean, or do we have to live here?
So, it's not the entire county, it's registered voters within the Stallion Springs district boundary. So, only registered voters that are Stallion Springs can vote on this. It's about the residents of the community making the decision, yes or no. So, it's all registered voters within the district boundary. Of Stallion Springs district boundary, yes. Not the entire county, just Stallion Springs. Anybody else? Any more questions? Okay, I think we're, I think Mr. Siverson wants to say a couple things before we wrap it up.
Yeah, my name's Bill Siverson, and I've been advocating for this since, I don't know, March, April. And so, I'm gonna go through this rather quickly, because it's four o'clock, and we've been here two hours. Some of the questions I've heard from the community, and also seen on the Facebook pages, I've spoken to Chief Stanrich for the Tehachapi Police Department, they're not gonna help. He understands the situation, he's not unsympathetic, but he, his job is to police the city of Tehachapi. They don't patrol Golden Hills, and they're right there. So, it's, don't assume they're gonna come in and start patrolling here, they just, they can't do that. I did reach out to Alex Alva, who is the Kern County Director of Budget and Finance, and I asked him for a really rough order of magnitude quote on if we were to contract with the Kern County Sheriff's Office, what would it cost? He made some assumptions, which, in the interest of time, I'm not gonna go through, but it's two and a half million the first year, and one point seven million ongoing after that. We don't have it, we don't have that money. There were some questions on the ballots, yes. The ballots will be mailed this Monday, will be put into the mail this Monday by the Elections If you don't get your ballot by Wednesday, Thursday, give them a ring. Or you can go online to kernvote.com if you wanna check your status, are you still registered to vote in Kern County? Did you recent, if someone you know recently moved into Stallion, they can register to vote by August tenth. And August tenth is the date for this measure, and register to vote in Kern County, and they'll be able to vote. The ballots are going to, you must reside, and by reside, I mean you're here for more than fifty-one percent of the time in Stallion Springs, and register to vote in Kern County. This all comes from our state constitution, it's Article thirteen A, Section four, if you wanna go down that rabbit hole. I did. It's there. I'll paraphrase what it says. The district, before the district can levy a special tax, and by definition, this is a special tax, you must get the approval of two-thirds of the electorate in the district. The electorate is all the registered voters, renters or not. It doesn't say anything about how many parcels are owned. If you're renting, it's the electorate. If, there was a question about what happens if our police officers leave. If you call 911, and I wanna touch on this for a bit, the system knows where you are. If you dial 911 from Stallion Springs, you're gonna reach the sheriff dispatcher in Bakersfield. If you call from Golden Hills or Alpine, same thing. If you call from the Savmar parking lot, you're gonna get the city dispatcher. If you call from Walmart, Tractor Supply, or Home Depot, 'cause of their, your closeness to the fifty-eight, you might get the CHP, you might get the city. My point is, the system knows where you are, and it'll send you to the right dispatcher. So, you're gonna get someone in, you'll get the dispatcher down there. The vehicles for law enforcement have a GPS, so they can see where the officers are. And what they'll do is- And what they'll do is, they'll just dispatch the closest one to you. I spoke to Sergeant Malloy, who commands the Tehachapi substation for the sheriff, and gave him this hypothetical situation. Somebody is, calls 911 and they're near the tire store, which is, you know, Golden Hills Boulevard. And they get Bakersfield, and he's gonna look, where are the deputies? There are five deputies, two senior deputies for the sheriff covering from Hart Flat to Cameron. Closest one available will be dispatched to that caller's residence. And they're coming from who knows where. In the meantime, there's a Tehachapi City Police Officer sitting in the parking lot in Save Mart just doing, having a cup of coffee. It doesn't matter. The dispatcher at the sheriff's office doesn't know that because it's a different system. He can't see that. That officer who's, what, a mile and a half away, is not gonna be dispatched to that person there in Golden Hills. If the deputy shows up, and this is what the chief alluded to, if the deputy shows up and just saw hell's breaking loose and he puts out a call, help, any available officer with a badge and gun is gonna come. City, police, CHP, it doesn't matter. And that's, just our whole community is like that. That's just, so this is a special tax, and I'm not gonna go through all the county, the codes and everything, but this is a special tax. There was a question raised, why can't this fee just be added to my CSD bill? It's not a fee. The state constitution defines a fee, defines an assessment. Special taxes are defined. This is special tax. It cannot be levied until there's 2/3. And it's 2/3 of the ballots received by the Elections Division. If they, there are 2021, registered as of May 22nd, 2021 registered voters in Stallion. So if it was all 2021, return the ballot, you need whatever 2/3 of that is. Can't do the math fast enough. If only 100 ballots are returned, you need 67 yes. That, that's all I have. If you know someone that hasn't been able to make it to a town hall and they have questions, come up to me. I'm, I'll sit down with them in P-Do's and buy them a cup of coffee and I'll go through the whole thing with them. I won't have this. I won't have the video and it won't take two hours. But I've been involved with this. I'm happy to sit down and answer the questions. If I don't know their answer, I'll go get it. But I do hope this passes. And if you have any questions for me right now, or if you're questioned out, that's okay. By the way, would you mind standing, just real quick? Either one, any, it doesn't have to be all three. We have these T-shirts that are for Save Our Police. I have some if you wish to purchase one. And with that, I wanna make one other thing really clear, because there's been some noise on Facebook. But just to understand, and I think Laura Lynn mentioned this, the CSD has eight departments. One of them is just called Police Department. If the jury doesn't pass, that, the department's still there. That, we have to go to LAFCO to get rid of. But there's no personnel, so to me, that means no police. But yes, the department's not going anywhere. It's the personnel that will be leaving. Does anyone have any questions, or should we all get out of here? Oh. Yes? Yep. You're very welcome.
I have discovered people in my neighborhood who do not receive yet.
That's, yeah, I kinda, I went through this rather quickly, so I am gonna bring that up. That's my concern, so let's go through that really quick. I have, so this is the postcard she's referring to. This went out, oh, five weeks ago? When I started into this, I wanted the mailing list for all the residents. And, because I wanted to send a letter out going, "Hey, this is what's going on." It was a one-page deal. And I tried the CSD. They couldn't give it to me. I went to the assessor's office. They didn't have it. And I ended up going to Elections Division, and they said, "Yeah, 40 bucks. Here you go." Elections, the Elections Office. And, yeah, it's 45 bucks, but you have to fill out an application and you have to, there are some rules about it. But that list, mailing list, is dated May, March 22nd, May 22nd. These mailing labels on these postcards came from that mailing list. And I verified these, which I got sent back to me because, and it's in, no such number, or there's no one there, or there's no mail receptacle. That's, there's only, I don't know, eight here or something. Well, so I checked the mailing list. Yes, those names and addresses are on the mailing list that the Elections Office gave me. Those do exist, because I went to Google Maps, so yes, in fact, there is a 17811 Cedar Canyon. So that tells me that something's filed up. If you don't, so again, if you don't get your ballot Wednesday or Thursday, if you wanna wait till Friday, fine. If you don't get it, then call the Elections Division. And by the way, all these people I've talked to in the government, really, really nice and helpful. Call them, tell them, "Hey, is my name and address on your roll, on the voter roll? I didn't get my ballot. And I'm sorry, I didn't call them Friday to ask, yesterday, to ask, 'What do you do? Do you get another ballot? Do you have to go down there to get the ballot?'" What, and so I don't have that answer. But it kinda bothers me that if they didn't get this postcard, are they gonna get their ballot? And I don't, I don't know. You have, until, if you're new here, if you just turned 18, now you're not gonna get a ballot if you register now, today. But you can still go down to the voters' office, the Elections Office. They're at Truston, N, first floor. And they'll probably, okay, sure, yeah, here's your ballot. You can fill it out and give it back to them if you want. But again, if you don't get your ballot this coming week, then get ahold of the Elections Office. Their website's kernvote.com. And I don't know, there's 30 people here and there's 2021 voters, so I don't know how to get to all of them. But I, it bothers me that, how is it you don't get this? Are you gonna get the ballot, yes? They're not, yeah, yeah. It's confidential information. I can't, the list I got, I can't even share with the rest of the advocacy members in my group. It's, I'm the only one with access to it. And I can only use it for either advocating for or against the measure, or the candidate, or whatever. There's a bunch of rules you have to follow. But, no, they are not allowed to give to me and I can't give it to them. And they can't send the letter out, which is why I did. And it turns out, the letter went out finally in June, and it turns out there were some residents that ran into Chief going, "What, what's going on?" So... Anything else? Yes? Okay. No, I told them not to send you a ballot, so... That's right, you do. The letter that went out, when I went through the list, there's, there are 1,179 individual homes with at least one voter. That's not how many homes there are in Stallion. That's how many homes with one registered voter, at least one. Quite a few of them, like mine, I have five in my residence. So what I wanted to do with the letter was, at least send two out to those homes that have multiple voters, so that at least two people get one. Well, that was quite a daunting project. So when it came to the postcards, I went, I kinda cheated and I wanted at least one postcard to get there. These are from me, just Joe Citizen. The Elections Office, it's gonna, you will, if you have three, four, it doesn't matter, you will each get a ballot. It's the entire electorate, so there should be roughly 2,021 ballots sent out, give or take. Some people have moved out, some have moved in. But I wasn't trying to slight anyone, it's just, it is really a daunting project to... Yes ma'am? No, I didn't. Can we leave it at that? I, I, I got some help. I did. Yes, you do. And I, I, you know what, I'm sorry. I, there was a comment made on Facebook over the weekend. Somebody who doesn't live here called my wife a liar. And I responded off-color. I, sorry about that. So I'm just gonna stay off Facebook and the group page and just, until this is over. Oh, by the way, one other thing. I got this from Jennifer Jordan, who runs the Elections Division. The, so the ballots will go out this Monday. The last day to postmark your ballot or get it into a box is August, Tuesday, August 26th. They are gonna start counting ballots. They're not waiting till August 26th. They're gonna start, like she says, E minus 29, so that's just, I mean, if you get your ballot and you mail it in, it's gonna get started. They're gonna start counting as they come in. They will stop accepting ballots by mail September 2nd, which is Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. So if your ballot ends up getting there September 3rd, it won't get counted. I don't know why it's September 2nd. I would've guessed 10 days, but I, it's September 2nd. On the evening, after 8:00 PM, on the evening of Tuesday, August 26th, the Elections Office will post on their website preliminary results of this Measure A. And I'm not sure what, Arvin's also got a special election. I'm not sure what it is, but the results for that. The final result, the final tally, won't get posted until they're done, which is gonna be sometime after September 3rd, and then they'll post it. I'm gonna be glued to the computer until I see that. But I just wanted to give that out so you guys knew. Oh, yes. Renters, if you're... If you're registered to vote and you live here, you're getting a ballot. Say that again?